We'll join as we. Over to you Lance.
And Sal, this is on Facebook Live too?
Uh, I'll, I'll add it after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start off first, I want to thank everybody for being here. I am, my name's Lance Livinstone, I'm one of the co-chairs of the Durham Coalition. And we're gonna start off with land acknowledgement. And that we're meeting on Aboriginal land that has been inhabited by indigenous people from the beginning. By speaking uh with you from the traditional territory of the Mississauga's of Skougog Island First Nations. This territory is covered by the upper Canada treaties. Now, I'm going to introduce my, the our first speaker. I'd like to introduce Pam Parks, she's the other co-chair of the Durham Health Coalition. And she is a registered practical nurse who works in the emergency department at Lake Ridge Health. The Oshawa Hospital site, she is a wonderful person, she takes care of people in every aspect of her life. As a mom, as a nurse, as a health coalition co-chair. And in her union where she is local president of QP workers at the hospital. Pam Parks is gonna talk a little bit about her, about what's going on the ER and then she's gonna take over the moderators. By introducing the other speakers. The floor is yours Pam.
Hi everyone, can you hear me okay? Hi, um, thanks Lance for that warm welcome. Um, as again, I'm Pam, I'm just a practical nurse. And I, I work in the Oshawa Emergency. Um, I love May of this year, I'm now the president of the K P Local six three six four. Um, with me today are a few people that some of you may already know as strong defender of public healthcare. We have Bernie, uh, Sarah and Natalie, which I will introduce more um, in a, in a just a short while. Some of you may remember that in 2018 Doug Ford said he was going to end hallway healthcare. Well, instead doing that, he, uh, the last four years, the hallway healthcare has not only stubbornly remained but gotten worsened, more than eighty emergency room closure in the last few months. And I can tell you as working in the Durham region that, um, or, um, emerged at the main, uh, hub of the Lake Ridge, Oshawa was, uh, they had, uh, few zones closed, uh, even the trauma at one point or another, um, that area was closed, very devastated right across. Um, uh, not just in Durham, but right across, uh, the province. Now adding into, uh, year three of the pandemic, Premier Ford is presiding over the worst staff in shortage I've ever seen in my thirty plus years of career as a nurse. And what's more, it's becoming clearer that our premier just doesn't really care about this crisis of care or the staff in shortage. Like he and his government are purposely letting our public system collapse, starving it of funding and watching hospitals staff leave in droves. Like they are manufacturing a crisis in the public health system so that they can justify privatizing more and more of our public hospital services and other care in the community. Why else would, uh, Premier Ford and his health minister be watching all of this happen? Why would they not lift a finger to retain the healthcare workforce by scrapping their government uh, wage, uh, cap, which I'm sure most of you may know by now that called Bill one twenty-four. Um, this has has our P N Z other healthcare workers, uh, nearly three hundred thousand hospital workers and tens of thousands of more long-term care workers at ten percent cut in wages. When you factor in the thirty-year-high inflation increase that we are living with this last year. We worked diligently through a pandemic and we are being thanked with a wage cut. How is this a thank you, Mr. Premier? If they wanted to retain healthcare workers in our public system, they would stop the use of health staff and agency that's charged double or triple and what's healthcare work and watch the healthcare workers make, which is just next to nothing. And put all that funding, billions of dollars, that's now growing into the profit margin of these companies. They can hire more healthcare workers with all these dollars, making more of our hospital and long-term care jobs full-time. Lessen our workloads, offering proper financial incentives and permanent wage increase to keep those of us who are still working there, not leaving, not retiring, purely because we are too burnt out to continue. If the premier were committed to strengthening our public healthcare, he would listen to unions like QP and the other unions um, that are out there, um, trying to get him to actually come and talk to them. Um, these unions are united. Um, this is, uh, the government's plan of failing us all, patients, their family and the frontline staff. A lot of people are suffering and really they are suffering. And the five unions have ideas to retain healthcare workers and still nothing from the premier. Uh, to, uh, meet with them to find out what their ideas are so that we can help the public we serve. But instead of working with healthcare unions and frontline staff, find solutions to stop in prices. Funding public hospitals at least at the rate of inflation, we know that the Ford government plans to expand private surgery clinics and creating de facto private hospitals that will set up shop and be in direct competition with public hospitals for scarce healthcare staff. Today, our hospital staff turnover rate is, uh, approximately fifteen percent. Thousands of hospital jobs are left unfilled. It's in this context that the deliberations understaffing, uh, the deliberate understaffing of our hospitals. The degraded compensation for the workforce, the impossible work for workload should be viewed. And to wrap it up, it is not cynical to suggest that these things are not accidental, but deliberate. Plans event to create a backlog of surgeries and other procedure and open the door to privatization. The Ministry of Health tries to quiet critics by suggesting that closure of eighty community ERs over the summer. And now the huge pressure of the pediatric hospitals are not crises, but planned events. Can you imagine? On the one hand, we want to believe that surely no one would plan such a system failure. And on the other hand, we know that this government is using the current weakness of the public hospital system against it to privatize the backlog of surgeries and procedures and diagnostics. I urge all of us who believe that public healthcare is a right to fight this push to privatize and dismantle our public hospitals. I urge people who have never even thought of protesting or speaking up anything to join with us in vocal, be very vocal opposition in communities across Ontario. This is our collective fight to stop Premier Ford and his health minister from creating a two-tier American-style private health system where what is in your wallet buys speedier and better care. And where these private clinics siphons off patients with less needed weight while our public hospitals deal with more complex patient. I urge you all to join us in this fight. Thank you for listening.
Good morning. Oh, sorry, go ahead Pam.
And now I will introduce, uh, Bernie. Bernie has, has been a registered nurse for over thirty years who has worked um, at the Saint Francis Memorial Hospital in the Emergency Acute Care, Complex Continuing Care, Dialysis, Telemedicine and the Lynn Nursing Clinic. She is, uh, interim president of the Ontario Nurses Association and is a board member of the Registered Nurses Association of Ontario. Help me to welcome Bernie. Go ahead Bernie.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, it's great to be here with all of you on this Zoom format. Uh, we can all do this on a Saturday morning from the comfort of our homes, which is great. So I'd like to thank, uh, the Ontario Health Coalition Group here and especially to Natalie for, uh, organizing this important town hall. Uh, what we are facing, uh, is a severe crisis in, um, the dismantling of our public healthcare system. So ONA represents over sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across this province. And that also includes another eighteen thousand nursing students. I'm very grateful to be here with all of you today and to have this opportunity to share what is happening in our, our healthcare system uh, from the Ontario nurses, uh, that work there. At this point, anyone who has been paying attention has heard it before. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We've been in crisis mode now for three years. At some point, it's not a crisis anymore, it is the new reality. And I think that we all know that this cannot be the new reality. We know from a Canadian Health Institute health information data that Ontario has the worst in the country when it comes to RNs per capita. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty RNs per, per one thousand, one hundred thousand people, sorry. But in Ontario, we have only six hundred and sixty-eight RNs for a hundred thousand people. To put that into perspective, that means just to meet the Canadian average, Ontario needs to hire immediately twenty-five thousand RNs. Twenty-five thousand. What does a staffing shortage of this magnitude look like in practice? Well, it's become commonplace for nurses to be kept at the hospital for hours after their shift. Uh, because then either the next shift is short-staffed or there hasn't been, um, you know, someone hasn't been able to be replaced. So they are not able to meet their accountabilities to their college and safely transfer patient care. So they remain, they're dedicated professionals. We have nurses working on maternity floors that should have thirty-five RNs on a shift and they're working with seventeen to eighteen. We have hospitals where there are more vacant RN positions than there are on RNs on staff. Locally in the Durham area at Lake Ridge Health, we are losing staff faster than the hospital is recruiting its their replacements. The team is running out of options to stretch what staff are left there to cover all their patients' needs. Nurses and healthcare workers have been faced with redeployment, short staffing, extended shifts. They go home and the phone rings for them to come back. This takes its toll on them personally, they are tired, they are burnt out, and there is a severe cost to their families. We know that nurses try to be as resilient and resourceful as possible. They always put patients' care first and even in these extremely difficult times, our members are trying to find ways to provide the care that they know all patients need and deserve. The cost of this burden is taking its toll. Early retirements have gone up tremendously. Our new graduates, the young vivacious people coming out of nursing school are rethinking their careers. After, and they're leaving, they've maybe put one or two years in and sometimes they don't get even that. And they are leaving, they're leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure they have a work-life balance or they're even leaving nursing altogether. There's a very real cost to our healthcare system as this situation worsens. And now the full picture is really coming into view. The Ford government is setting the stage to use this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an already understaffed system and he has made it so much worse. He introduced Bill one twenty-four. Bill one twenty-four caps the wages of many nurses and healthcare professionals by, and violates our Charter of Rights. Ford is refusing to work with healthcare professionals to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan. There's
Is everyone frozen or just Bernie?
I think it's, uh, just Bernie.
Oh, we lost her. Oh, she may be back. Oh, mid-sentence. Um, how about we do this? Uh, I think she's dropping out and coming back in. Do you mind just giving it one minute and we'll go to see if she can join back in.
God loves technology, right?
I see, well, she's coming in Pam, I see Jennifer French is here, she's our local MVP. Welcome Jennifer. Hi, and are there municipal councillors or other local politicians here? I can't really see across my screens. Maybe you can raise your hand if you are.
And while we wait, is there anyone from the media here? If you can raise your virtual hand so we can see.
I'm sorry, I completely lost my internet.
No, that's fine, come back.
Uh, okay, I, I'm not sure where I left off, but I'll, I'll just pick up from where I think I left off.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so across the country, we do pride ourselves on our world-class healthcare system. We do believe that the access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not your bank account. Nurses.
Oh no.
We lost her again.
Bernie, if you can hear us, is she gone totally? Go to the meeting?
Yeah, no, she's still, her picture is still up, but I'm not sure.
Okay, if you can hear us Bernie, um, it's just probably your internet connection just went unstable for a little bit. We can move to Sarah and then come back, um, when it stabilizes, should we try that?
Sure, I will introduce, uh, Sarah and then we'll see.
Sally, can you just send Bernie a note so she knows what's going on?
Yep.
Thanks honey.
Okay, uh, Sarah Labelle is a medical lab technologist working at Lake Ridge Hospital. The Oshawa, um, site, she is one of the people who did and continues to do thousands upon thousands of our community COVID tests. She is also the chair of the Health Professional Division of the Ontario Public Service Employee Union, which represent around healthcare profession and hospitals. They are the ones mostly on the front lines of privatization of diagnostic. Help me to welcome Sarah. Go ahead Sarah.
Thank you Pam, um, thank you to everyone for joining us today. It's good to see so many people on Zoom, uh, bright and early on a beautiful Saturday morning in, I'm in Oshawa. Um, I am one of, of over fifteen hundred health professionals that work in the Lake Ridge, uh, different sites and one of more than twenty-five thousand health professionals that have been providing frontline services throughout the pandemic. Our members work in professions such as medical laboratory, uh, services, we work in diagnostic imaging, dieticians, social workers, physiotherapists, respiratory therapists, pharmacists, anesthesia assistants and any other professional that you may encounter through your visits if you come into a public hospital. Our members were the ones that provided COVID testing, they were the ones that intubated all of the COVID patients. They were the ones that, you know, the, our X-ray techs made sure that the tube was properly placed when they intubated those COVID patients, our physiotherapists, when people were ventilated and came off the vents were the ones that cleared their lungs and got them up and, and working and walking again. After our speech language pathologists taught them how to swallow, uh, post-COVID and all of the things that they do, of course, outside of COVID and the work that they do continued throughout the pandemic. And what we saw in the pandemic was, you know, we, we're talking about the announcement of privatization of diagnostics and surgeries, which this government is, you know, intent on pursuing. But what happened throughout the pandemic was privatization of those services and what that meant for patients. What we saw in the pandemic was we had people who could not get access to COVID testing. They, they paid for the COVID tests, which PCR is the, you know, gold standard for COVID testing. It is, you know, what everybody deems to be the appropriate mechanism by which to diagnose COVID. And that was all but abandoned by the time we hit August of twenty-twenty-one. Prior to then, the government was funding our public hospitals to provide that testing. And our public hospitals did all of that with no new staff. They immediately ramped up and provided thousands and thousands of tests up to a high point of seventy-five thousand tests. Extra tests a day on top of the millions of tests that they do to diagnose cancers, uh, to diagnose genetic conditions, to diagnose, you know, um, any kind of cardiac condition, liver disease. We do all of that on top of seventy-five thousand COVID tests and they privatized that. They, they moved COVID testing into pharmacies, they moved it into private clinics. It was rapid testing and people had to pay for it. In December of twenty-twenty-one, people who wanted to visit their loved ones in long-term care could not get access to a COVID test. But people who wanted to travel, those who, you know, had the luxury of being able to travel because they weren't tied to working in a job that they needed to provide frontline services or that they weren't tied to sick family members who had COVID. In a pandemic, people who had the luxury of being able to travel could get access to COVID tests. And people who needed to go see their loved ones over the holidays had to pay or couldn't get access at all. They went without seeing their loved ones. And that's what privatizing, privatization does. That is the real cost of privatizations, people who don't get access to the services that they need because they can't afford them or they're not the priority for the private sector and they wait and their loved ones wait. Many of them waited in long-term care homes, waiting to see their loved ones over the holidays and did not get to see them. They privatized the vaccine clinics. In, across the province, the professionals, pharmacists, pharmacy technicians, you know, respiratory therapists, many of them volunteered on top of their hospital work, they volunteered to operate all these clinics in the public sector and they did thousands of vaccines a day while pharmacies were asking to do, to do the vaccines and could only do several hundred a day. So who really stepped in and stepped up in the pandemic to do thousands of vaccines was the public sector. It was public hospitals, it was workers who were already tired and beleaguered. And if we privatize what's left of our public hospitals and I'll be very clear here, you're hearing about privatization as a solution to solve a staffing crisis. The largest staffing crisis in the history of Canadian healthcare. And that their solution, and it's a false solution, is that if we privatize surgeries and diagnostics, we're gonna fix the backlog. Privatization does nothing to add any professionals into the system. All of the surgeries that we perform in public hospitals require respiratory therapists to make sure that people are still breathing. They require perfusionists if you're getting open-heart surgery. They require anesthesia assistants and anesthesiologists in order to ensure that you are able to be sedated during your surgery. They require OR, OR techs, they require medical laboratory technologists to do the testing. Many of the surgeries are, you know, surgeries to remove parts of your body that require analysis to ensure you don't have cancer. Those, those things are done by people in the public system. And if you now move them into the private system, you're not adding any of the people that do that work. We require X-ray technologists, CT, MRI to do ultrasound, to do all of the work to provide surgeries and diagnostics for people. And you're not adding any staff. In fact, it will do the exact opposite. What will happen is we will have a parallel system. And in the parallel system, the public will be dealing with the cancer surgeries, the high vol, the high labor, the difficult surgeries, you know, intensive cardiac surgeries. People who have comorbidities will be dealt within the public system. And the private system will poach the cream, they will skim the cream. They want the easy surgeries, they want the high, the high-volume surgeries, they want the best patients. You know, they want the healthiest patients, they want the patients that don't have, you know, any other health conditions. And they will be prioritized over the people that need surgeries in our public hospitals. And they will poach the valuable health professionals that we are relying on in the public system to provide those services. So this will make our public system even worse. Wait times will go up for those that require surgeries and those that can afford to pay or the healthiest and the wealthiest will be the ones that will get access to surgeries first. We already know this is happening in Sholdice, one of our respiratory therapists who is, you know, in his thirties, working in a hospital in the province of Ontario, had to have a hernia surgery. He's in his thirties, he's very fit, he's very, you know, he's able to withstand any kind of surgical intervention and he's doing very well. And his assessment, that he was told, you will get your surgery, but if you gain any weight prior to your surgery date, we will cancel your surgery and we will not do the surgery. So again, they're skimming the healthiest and the patients that are, you know, not in high need of the surgeries that we provide in public hospitals. So that's what we're looking at in, that will happen in all kinds of surgeries. And it will be a very negative impact to patient care because those that will require surgeries who are triaged in our public healthcare system in a way that those that need the surgeries first, those people will be on a longer waitlist because we will have less staff in our public hospitals to do that work. And that is the real cost of privatization is that it will be, you know, those that require the most care will be the ones that will suffer the most and be languishing on waitlists the longest. And so this is something that we should oppose, uh, and we should work together to fight privatization. And there is a solution, you know, we're not here all doom and gloom. There is a solution and there is time to intervene and do what we need to do to save our public hospitals and to build up the, the public institutions that we have spent decades building in our local communities that people have fundraised in their local communities. I mean, we've done that in Oshawa. We've fundraised for MRI machines, for CT machines, we've built up the cancer center. We've done all of that because we collectively believe that our healthcare system and our hospital system in Durham is, you know, something to be proud of and something we want all of our community members to have access to. And so we need to fight to protect our public healthcare system. It, it is our, you know, jewel, it's something that we collectively decided to build through taxation over the years. And it's something that other countries are, you know, wish that they had. Anybody who's south of the border who is mortgaging their home to get access to cancer treatments or to heart surgeries, wish that they had public healthcare like we have here in Ontario and in Canada. And it's something that we should be proud of and we should fight to protect. So thank you to all of you who are clear defenders of public healthcare and want to make sure that our community has access to the services that our members deserve. We have forty-seven thousand vacancies across our public hospitals right now. And privatizing healthcare will not fill those forty-seven thousand vacancies. We need to invest in public education and institutions to train new professionals to into the careers. We need to attract them into our hospitals by ensuring that they have better work-life bal- balance. Our people across the province are working, we have perfusionists in, you know, Hamilton area and across the province who are working twenty-six days in a row without a day off. That's unsafe and it is not sustainable, so we need to attract more of them. We have regional programs that are delivered even through Durham that we have people that are working double shifts, coming in the next day on call, no time off that, you know, are getting tired and ready to retire and leave and we can't afford to lose anymore, so we can fix it. There is a solution. There is a solution and we can do it if we work together and provide those innovative solutions to the government and put political pressure on them. This is a ballot box issue. And there will be significant fight back. And they will not get reelected. That needs to be the message. They will not get reelected in any riding in Ontario if they do not put a stop to privatization and invest in our public hospitals. So that's the opportunity that we have to do organizing in our communities for the next election. Let's make sure we flood the ballot boxes next time.
Thank you, Sarah. That was very powerful. Um, I see Bernie, you're back. So we're gonna get you to try and finish up.
Okay, I'll give it another go. This is my rural internet. I'm sorry, everybody. So, um, you know, I was, uh, at the point where we were talking about the devastating impacts of privatization and um, Sarah has also, uh, so eloquently, uh, discussed this as well. But the most broke boat broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized. Many long term care and long term care homes and home care. Uh, private healthcare will take away from our public care by pulling those resources, as Sarah said, and staff from the public system. As nurses, we actually have already seen this as our colleagues have left to to go to a public system that will, uh, provide them with some, uh, immediate benefits. We can't make, uh, we can't really can't blame these nurses who make that choice. Uh, the agencies make it very lucrative for them in the moment. Uh, some of them paying three and four times, uh, you know, what a nurse will make by staying at her hospital for years and years and years. They can choose their own hours. And the reason that the, um, agencies can pay more conveniently enough is that they are not subject to Bill one twenty four. So there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to the public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for their nurses. That over time will take its toll on those workers as well. It undermines nursing as a stable career and I've seen that i- in the chat as well. And it undermines our healthcare system by soft siphoning off those precious dollars that line go to lining corporate pockets. That is just disgusting. This isn't, this will impact access and quality of care. It will hurt patients who can't afford to pay and it will just demoralize the system even further. We cannot let this happen. Ontario's public health system is not Doug Ford's. It's ours and it's not his to dismantle and sell off to his corporate buddies. Our public health system has been built up over generations. It belongs to all of us and I'm imploring everyone here today to stand up, to speak out against this. Ontario nurses will be there with you today and will continue to work hard and hand in hand with our allies to fight for the investments that we need in public healthcare. So that everyone, everyone gets the care they need and they deserve. Let's stop Doug Ford's plans in his tracks. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Um, next we will have our next speaker is Natalie Mayer. Has been the executive director of the Ontario Health Coalition for twenty two years. She has built the Health Coalition into the largest and and brought us public interest group on healthcare in the province, representing more than three quarters of million Ontarians in its net- network of more than five hundred members organization and more than fifty local chapters. She's a former board member of the Canadian Health Coalition where she spearheaded numerous national campaigns to safeguard and improve single tier public Medicare. She is a contributing author in three books on healthcare policies, privatization, and building the movement to protect public healthcare. She has written hundreds of articles, reports and submissions, testifies regularly before legislative committee and is featured in hundreds of media interview on healthcare. Help me welcome Natalie, our fearless leader that fight for us all across, not only Ontario, not only Ontario, but across the country. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Pam. Thanks, Pam, and thank you, Lance and all the, um, members of the Durham Health Coalition, Bernie and Sarah. Thank you very, very much. So thanks for being here today, Saturday morning. I won't take a ton of your time because you kind of, you've heard comprehensively, mostly from the staff though, point of view. And I just want to, um, talk a bit about patients, you know, what's going on. You know, Lakridge, like I find this shocking. The other, oh, maybe a week or week and a half ago, I got a call from someone in the media and they wanted to do an interview about the Lakridge Emergency Department. And they had pulled out the data and Lakridge Health had more vacancies in the emerge for nurses than they had nurses. So there were more actual vacant positions than filled positions in the emergency department. You know, when the staff were talking about, when you hear Sarah and you hear Bernie and Pam talking about the need to improve the working conditions and the wages for staff. This isn't like unions just advocating to up their wages. We've never seen anything like what we're seeing in the hospitals across, um, Ontario. And it is a global phenomenon, like there's no question that the pandemic has taken its toll all around the world on healthcare staff and there are shortages everywhere. But Ontario was uniquely terribly placed leading into the pandemic. And we really are in a mess. I remember going to Lakridge Emerged. I had lost a lot of blood. I was really, my heart, uh, was, um, uh, had an arrhythmia because I had lost so much blood. I was really in serious condition. I couldn't even get to the triage nurse. Like I waited an hour, I think it was two hours. Uh, Sarah, do you remember? I think it was two hours. Couldn't even get to the triage nurse with a heart arrhythmia and I think a hebon globin around like fifty eight. It was really, I I could have gone into shock and died. It was a terrible situation. In the end, I couldn't really walk. Other people, not not hospital staff, helped me out to the car. And I was taken, um, by a friend downtown to Mount Sinai where I was seen. That was pre-pandemic at Lakridge Health. You know, the emergency department, when I was there, I counted thirty some odd people waiting for triage and then another hundred and something in the other waiting room, waiting to actually, you know, having been triaged, waiting to go in and see the physicians. It was just unbelievable. Now, of course, the situation is even worse than that. I wanted to reach you because most recently the pediatric hospitals have joined adult hospitals in total crisis. And this is what it looks like on the ground right now. My family lived this nightmare when my six year old daughter was rushed to hospital, barely breathing last week. Now that she's out of hospital, my cortisol levels are down a bit. I can share our experience and some questions I'm asking. When we arrived at the emerge, families were overflowing from the waiting room out into the parking lot. Security guards were tasked with maintaining order. I elbowed my way in and was immediately seen due to how acute my daughter's illness was. Kids who weren't so sick that they needed the hospital to keep them breathing were faced up to a fourteen hour wait for, to see a doctor at one point. There simply wasn't enough staff. I witnessed a three year old with a bleeding laceration on her forehead turned away from the hospital. A couple of kids showed up who required all of the emergency staff to keep them alive. The triage nurse explained to the waiting room that their wait would be longer. Parents were irate. A mother screamed at the nurse. Security intervened to protect the nurse from two fathers. During this period, there were no staff available to monitor my daughter. It was up to me to monitor her oxygen levels and to administer oxygen and ventilin. The triage nurse did her best to check each kid who arrived, but it was impossible. She simply did not have the resources and tools she needed. She kept her cool and did her job skillfully and empathetically despite abuse from the stressed out parents. I left her a love letter. Eventually, my daughter received the IV and lung X-ray she needed. We were admitted into acute care where we spent three nights with excellent care. She played soccer this weekend without ventilin, so she's back to normal. It will take me longer to recover. Here are the questions I'm left with. How can we expect people to work twelve hour shifts under that kind of stress and not burn out or leave nursing? I would have lasted approximately five minutes in that job and it's just the beginning of the flu and virus season. This is year three of the healthcare crisis. She means the pandemic. Oopsie. There are not enough healthcare staff and those who are left are burnt out and working sick often. What is the game plan here? We can't expect these people to prop up the system forever at the expense of their own mental and physical health. How can we be kinder to each other? I get that having a sick kid in a merge at three AM who can't see a doctor is awful. But I was horrified by the behavior of some of the parents. And then she goes on to ask about why the vaccination rates for kids under twelve is still so low and so on. Anyway, I just thought she was so eloquent and describes really in kind of visceral terms what it's like. You know, in the emergency departments, we have members who are parents of kids who are profoundly disabled. And they're being turned away from a merge because they have some equipment at home. And they, you know, know how to do an array of things. They're resuscitating. One of them was telling me she was resuscitating her daughter without a nurse present in her in her house because she got turned away from sick kids emerge. That's what it looks like here. And the pediatric hospitals, as I said, just joined the adult hospitals in crisis. The adult hospitals have been in this crisis for, you know, quite some time, actually long before the pandemic. It just has gotten worse. I don't even have words anymore. Like what is beyond crisis? You know, it, we we don't throw these terms around lightly and healthcare people are used to crises. That's what they do. You know, this is, uh, this is on a different scale altogether. I just want to show you visually. Bernie talked about the number of nurses per patient that we have in Ontario. This is leading into the pandemic. And see, Ontario, what they did was they cut funding for hospitals. They actually didn't cut it. They 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 froze funding at zero percent increase for a decade. So that, you know, inflation will go up and hospitals would have to downsize because they wouldn't be able to meet, you know, continue um, to provide even that service level, right? So population keeps increasing, the aging keeps increasing, but the hospital funding stayed at zero. Then for another ten years, they kept funding at below the rate of inflation. Then in the last couple of years of the Liberal Government, having seen the crick, the crisis that had been created by this endless downsizing of the hospitals, they actually started to open beds. That was like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Um, and then Ford got in in twenty eighteen and he brought back in hospital cuts, again, real dollar cuts to hospitals. And in the years leading into the pandemic, he brought in cuts to long term care, to hospitals, pu- uh, public health, you know, tried to restructure and privatize EMS and so on and so forth. And so, um, you know, heading into the pandemic, we had no search capacity whatsoever left. We couldn't even deal with a normal flu year. And I just want to show you what this looks like. So forcing the hospitals to downsize. Now Ontario's hospitals have the fewest beds, just like Bernie was saying, the fewest nurses per person. We have the fewest beds per person of any province in the country. A bed, by the way, is a staffed, a bed that's staffed and in operation. Like a bed is just a bed. It's just a piece of furniture without the staff to operate it. The health professionals that Sarah is talking about, who take the blood or do your MRIs and CTs or put the electrodes on and check your heart rhythm. The nurses, uh, who provide virtually all of the bedside care, um, the physicians, right? So we have, uh, the fewest hospital beds staffed in an operation in Ontario. It's easier to see by this bottom one. So there we are, down at the bottom. And we're actually a long way away from all the provinces to the east of Quebec, right? And the average of the rest of the country is one bed per thousand more than we have. So we have fifteen million people in Ontario. That's fifteen thousand thousands. We're fifteen thousand beds short of the average of the rest of the country. Just so you get a picture of, that's what, you know, twenty some odd, thirty years of hospital downsizing has wrought in Ontario. And, you know, lest you believe that when the Ford government says throwing money at it won't make a difference. Well, I just want to show you that actually, you know, it does. So it's total nonsense. I'm just gonna go back. Can you see this? I'm going back and I'm gonna go to funding. This is all on our website, by the way, if you're ever interested in digging around and getting the data. So this is public hospital funding has a proportion of our GDP, of our economic output. These are all the ways that economists measure this. So Ontario is the bottom of the country. And we're well below the average of the other provinces. So you can also measure funding as like per person, right? Hospital funding per person. You look at it per person and boom, we're dead last in the country. Again, you know, there's no surprise why we're in the situation that we're in and public healthcare funding overall. So that was hospital funding. I'll just show you. We're second last per person or yeah, as a funding per person for healthcare in the country. A long way from the average, long way from the average. And but as a proportion of our economy, which is really the kind of measure of affordability, like how much of your economic output are you using, paying for this? Um, we're second from the bottom of the country. So just, I just say this because it dr- you know, it's infuriating. People don't really know what the numbers are. Who knows what we can afford or not among normal Ontarians? And when the premier keeps saying, oh, you know, the status quo is unacceptable, but tries to cut off every avenue in terms of improving the public system, you know, because he wants to privatize. He wants to create the crisis and privatize. Um, you know, then we gotta challenge that directly. Ontario funds all our public services at the lowest rate in Canada. You know, or if you're upset because you face more school fees, you know, university tuition, uh, out of pocket costs for healthcare, the parks are expensive, you know, every public service has been cut. Um, i- in this province over decades, it's because our province has prioritized giving tax cuts to the wealthy. Tax cuts always benefit the wealthy. That's what they're about. Um, and, uh, uh, they're always sold as if they're gonna help us, but they don't. They're about, uh, transferring money back to um, the wealthiest who pay the most taxes and should, um, and, uh, and to corporations. Um, so our province has prioritized those things at the expense of our healthcare system. There is no question, we can actually solve the hospital staffing crisis. In Quebec, and we've been demanding that the Ford government do this for, for actually years now. At the end of the first wave in Quebec, uh, the first wave of the pandemic, the Quebec government uh, themselves did a mass recruitment. They aimed to recruit ten thousand PSWs. Um, train them and get them into the long term care homes. They had a devastating first wave like we did. Actually, theirs was worse than ours. They actually ended up hiring seven thousand five hundred of them. They paid them for their training, twenty one dollars an hour. They did three months intensive fast track training for them. Um, and then they, uh, increased their pay and they got them into, I think it was twenty four dollars an hour or something. Got them into the long term care homes by the second wave and they had a far better second wave. We had a far worse second wave. Our government steadfastly refused to do that. Um, and we had thousands of people die in the second wave of covid in the long term care homes. We could do that, um, and we, uh, and, uh, you know, we could do that and that would help long term care, home care where there's staffing crises. And the chronic care hospital beds, the ones where, you know, PSWs help to staff the beds. For nurses, it takes longer to train them, right? Same with the health professionals that Sarah was talking about. So, yeah, you know, the, we need to obviously increase the number that are going into nursing colleges and universities, so on. Um, and, uh, for the health professionals, but mostly we have to attract back the ones who've left, the ones who voted with their feet. And to do that, they have to deal with the workloads. They have to have, um, staff to patient ratios that are reasonable. The staff have to have some control over their own schedules. You know, this idea that you could work, um, like a respiratory therapist, um, we were talking with seventy plus hours a week and still be called in for overtime every time you're off. They feel guilty because they can't go in um, and help their colleagues and they know their colleagues are short staff, but they're working all kinds of overtime already. Like this cannot go on like this. The pressure that they're under is just unbelievable. So so some control over their schedules, reasonable schedules, reasonable workloads. You know, Bill one twenty four, which is, can you believe we have wage suppression legislation in the middle of a pandemic? Like where the staff have put their lives on the line for all of us. I mean, it's lunacy. So it's just a fork in the eye to the staff. I don't think it's the reason that they're leaving, but it's just so disrespectful and infuriating to people. And this is sort of the flip side of the same coin. You know, they refuse, the Ford government absolutely refuses to do anything substantive to deal with the crisis and is instead privatizing. And is instead privatizing. Um, and so everyone talked about why that's a problem. It's also a problem for patients. Because the private clinics extra bill patients illegally and charge you for things like your cataract surgery and for. Um, all kinds of add-ons and so on. Their business model is to extra bill patients. I won't talk more about that. Because I don't want to go on forever. I just want to say this, there is no question we can win. We've stopped the closure of dozens of small hospitals, uh, emergency departments, birthing units, you know, we saved the. Poor Colburn and the Fortiary Hospitals from closure multiple times. We stopped the closure of the um, birthing unit in Leamington and Midland. We saved the um, emerges in uh, Wallaceburg and um. All kinds of hospitals across Ontario. We won, you know, an expansion of beds and we saved the. Thoracic cancer surgery in Windsor. Like when we act, we actually win. We've stopped multiple governments from privatizing the hospital services. But we gotta do it again. Like there is no question here. If we don't fight, our take on it is that the Ford government is extremely serious. That we pa- face the gravest threat to public healthcare. Um, that we've ever seen, actually. Um, and they announced the privatization of the hospitals in the dead of summer, right after they were elected. Like that's what people do when they don't want anyone to see, like at least people watching dead of August. You know, and uh, and early in their term. So it's far away from the next election. They get it in before we have a chance the next election. So our challenge is to make it impossible for them to do it. We have some ideas about how to do that. We wanted to talk with you about it today, but I just, like, there's no one else to do it. It was regular people that built public healthcare in this province. Uh, most of our communities have spent the last hundred years building. Our local hospitals, like giving through payroll deductions, volunteering, literally building up our local hospitals and services. It's going to be regular people like that again, who save them from um, destruction by the Ford government. So thank you so much for being here. I'm looking forward to the fight back. We're gonna do it. Uh, and uh, and we're just gonna give those guys a run for their money. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie, um, Sarah and Bernie. Um, that was very insightful. And I'm just wondering, I did ask earlier, I'm not sure, or we did invite, but I'm not sure if there's any media in the house. That uh, would like to ask any questions. Um, and I'll also will turn it over to Lance that we'll see if there was any questions. Uh, that were just directed in the chat. And um, while I do that, I just want to say, take this opportunity on behalf of our frontline workers. Um, in healthcare, to thank you very much for being here to listen into our plea. Um, our, our registered practical nurse, dietary, housekeeping, particle, P S W maintenance. Sterile processor stores, uh, lab technician, R Ns, uh, doctors, like, um, you know, all the professionals. We are asking for your help because we can't do this alone. And I saw in the chat. Where there's a couple of comments that why not go on strike and all. Um, at the end of the day, I'm sure that if there's a strike that went down. Um, we're counting on you, the citizens out there that are not in healthcare to be the ones. To truly, truly lead this fight and and speak up. Call the M P Ps in your, in your areas, call the premiers, um, call on them to help us. Because um, if you go out there and you try to organize, trust me, your healthcare workers will be right there with you also. And in-house as a unionized um, healthcare workers. Um, we are also working together and we're planning, uh, whatever that looks like. We don't know yet. I can't speak for the leaders of our unions. But whatever that looks like when you see us out there, please come and join us. It's not that we're out there trying to get. Um, wages, because we hear it all the time when we're out there fighting to keep our actual. Uh, system in the hospital, uh, believe it or not, people give us the finger. You and tell us that you go back, you overpaid people go back and you're always on, I I'll trying to look for something. But really and truly, we're fighting for your rights and now we're asking for your help. So with that, I will uh, turn it over to Lance uh, to feed for questions.
Okay, thank you Pam. The first question is on here, it's. From uh, Nola Marion and she wants to know, is it time to form a coalition with other public services? Like teachers and example, who are under privatization, a threat to create a louder voice. And shine a light on this privatization agenda of our current provincial government. That question is to anybody in the panel that wants to talk about it? Bernie?
Yes, so um, you will all know that with the uh, recent um, strike that Q P held. That uh, all the unions did band together and get behind them. Uh, we were uh, very pleased to sit in the house when that bill was repealed. And um, we, we do know. Uh, that we have come together in solidarity and we do know that as nurses. Uh, we have asked for them to support us. Should we have to do like information pickets or anything like that? Something legal are, we don't have enough nurses to have people find and fear that. Uh, reprisal from government. Uh, so we have asked and the unions have committed to uh, to being with us if that should happen.
Thank you, Bernie. Uh, the next question is if the provincial government were to fund the system. Sufficiently, are, are universities currently providing enough nurses, graduates to be able to fill the? Twenty five thousand R N staffing shortage? With new nurses and or our nurses who have left the public system still qualified, return to nursing in the short term. What needs to be done to ensure that we are not on, that we not only fund nursing positions, but attract new nurses to the profession? To fill these nurses. Positions, sorry. Anybody who wanna? Okay, Bernie?
Uh, yeah, so um, I have met with the Joint Provincial Nursing Committee. And we have been discussing, uh, you know, the issues with regards to education with the number of uh. Of nurses and healthcare professionals being able to come out of colleges. There is a cap on those currently. It needs to increase. That's one thing we know for sure. It needs to be affordable. Um, when nurses come out, they need to have, uh, the College of Nurses has to process those. Um, graduates in a more uh, effective manner so that they are not waiting for months and months for their. Um, for their licenses to be provided so they can be given a temporary license. Uh, and work until they, they do write their, write and pass their college exam. Uh, the college exam uh, is um. A N C L E X exam, it is a uh, national exam. And it is one that they write after they graduate from uh, their school. So um, those types of things need to be worked on in a collaborative model. Uh, with other groups that farm the uh, form the provincial nursing committee. And uh, they, this, these asks have to be brought to the government. They have to approve it. They need to invest the money and they need to, they need to do it now. They need to do it so that in September of next year, we have. More nurses going into, more, more people going into nursing than we have ever seen before.
Sarah, you wanna talk about this too?
I just wanted to talk about from the perspective of the health professionals too, because I mean, we've heard. Very much about the nursing vacancies and there is a number, a concrete number attached to those. With the health professionals, it is a lot more challenging because you're talking about so many professions and some hospitals. Don't even bother posting the positions anymore because there is nobody to recruit. Speech, language pathology prior to the pandemic, it was taking hospitals three years to recruit a speech, language pathologist. That's the challenge we're dealing with. In Hamilton, I talked about the regional um, ECMO program. It's, there's uh, seventeen perfusionists are down to twelve. They've lost five over the pandemic and they're not replacing them and they are. A postgraduate program that takes many, many years. They have to do other programs prior, prior to perfusion. So it takes a long time and investment. Medical laboratory technology. The, the laboratory technologists across the province in the beginning of the pandemic in July. Of twenty twenty, we had over seventy four hundred medical laboratory technologists who were licensed to practice in the province of Ontario. We're down to sixty seven hundred right now. We have lost seven, over seven hundred of the workforce. In two and a half years of a pandemic. Forty-three percent of them can retire in the next five years. How many more are we gonna lose? There are currently four hundred full-time med lab vacancies that are across, posted across the province. And if you add the part-time in, you're talking about eight hundred vacancies that we're trying to fill across the province. Medical laboratory technologists are the people that diagnose every single illness. Every single illness in the province of Ontario. Any treatment and therapy that you are provided with is based on medical laboratory technology results. Or medical radiation technology results, X-ray, C T, M R I, nuclear medicine. Those people, again, those, the diagnostic imaging folks are at the same demographic as our medical laboratory technology folks. And they will be able to retire in droves in the next less than five years. So the time is now. And you're right, we don't have enough people in the cl- in the programs. This government has to open up new programs, programs that were closed. In some of these professions over the years, because you know, they decided there was too many of us. So like, let's just close, close these programs. They need to increase the number of spots in medical laboratory technology. There are a hundred and fifty spots per year. There's a fifty percent. Failure rate in that program, seventy-five are being graduated each year. How long is it gonna take us to fill those eight hundred? Vacancies that are going to get even higher. So that's just, you know, the challenge that we're dealing with. Uh, it, you know, is going to take investments in the education sector, in the colleges, in universities. And it's going to take investments in healthcare, of course, in order to recruit and retain. And we've all talked about Bill one twenty-four and yes, Bill one twenty-four is a problem and a challenge. And it is just mind numbing that this government cannot admit, admit in the context of a global pandemic. We made a mistake that they can't even say that is just like so infuriating. But the bigger issue is the working conditions, work-life balance. You, you know, you can have the highest wages in the world. We have hospitals right now that are paying double time, but they still can't fill those shifts because people are done. They want time with their family members. They're burnt out. So if we don't address. The, the number of staff and you know, look collectively for a solution, like you know, maybe shorter work week. There's a, you know, a way around Bill one twenty-four. Can we pay people the same wages they get but have less work hours? That would attract people, but you would need bodies to do that. But there has to be a better solution to what we're dealing with right now. And if you look at the UK, the nurses are striking for the first time in their history. They're going on strike on December fifteenth and twentieth and they may escalate their actions and they're going out because of their working conditions too. So. You know, I don't, I don't leave strike off the table. When, but time to start having those discussions. We're done.
I, I have a question for me, uh. If um, we start paying for uh. Somehow we have to pay for the education. Of these people to hi- you know, to hire people to come in, because I know if I was. It going into the workforce and I'm looking at something, I see all the issues going on with healthcare. I don't want to get into that. But, but if you had it so that uh, I want to become a, a nurse, R P N or what Sarah does. And uh, and I got my education paid for. After I graduated and started working in that field, that would attract more people, would it not? To the field, because they would be interested then. I just, that's just my opinion.
We did that in the seventies Lance, for medical laboratory programs. They paid people's tuition and it helped recruit people into the field and it got a whole bunch of new grads out working.
Bernie?
So there is currently an incentive uh, for nurses uh, that have graduated to uh, go out into rural communities and have a. Dollar amount provided back to them if they commit to and stay for five years at a time. That incentive needs to be province-wide. It need, it, it can't just be for uh, rural communities. It was to help rural communities staff their hospitals, which is wonderful. But people, you know, s- s- people will get out into these areas and realize it's not for them. And then they end up, you know, either having to pay this money back or leaving, you know, leaving that work. So it has to be province-wide.
Thank you Bernie. Somebody's got a question here. Uh, they want to know, can the healthcare system survive until the next election? Because that's still a few, about three or four years away and they want.
Well, it'll survive. It's just that people will die. People will die because they can't get their surgeries and they'll die because they can't get into a merge and. You know, that kind of thing. How far will they go on privatization? I mean, you know, like to some extent, this is up to us. We. We are gonna, like, the fact that people aren't out in the streets by the thousands protesting this at this point. Uh, you know, is I think because people don't necessarily realize, I think every press conference goes. You know, the press tells the story about the e- emerge crisis. And the media are complaining to me that they get the same speaking lines from the minister every time. They just say, we're hiring six thousand. You know, healthcare staff, which like lord only knows if they have or haven't. There's no, no railway to track that. But we know is that, that the net, like, there's more staff leaving than coming in. And a spitter spatter of staff going into workplaces where they're overworked and, and you know, where there, there's a lot of violence and. People are screaming at them and there's, you know, they're just, it's impossible to do the job. They leave, right? We know this. So uh, obviously that is not gonna work, but the way appears in the media. Is that the Ford government has this answer for things. That's how the P R people work. They just give a P R line. And it kind of puts it to bed for people. So we gotta, we gotta, we have to, we have to set the spark. That catches, you know, the Kindles Ontario to react to this in the way that people should react. When their lives are in danger, which they are right now. So um, I think we need to talk about the. The action plan rather urgently because we've got to be off this at eleven fifty Lance. Because there's a Windsor meeting on this moon and they're all gonna get a message.
Well, that, that sort of works out to the next question was here anyhow. Uh, the person wants to know what we can do to, let me see where it was now. So we can maybe discuss it. And want to know what we can do to help out things before the next election, uh.
Okay, and I didn't want to talk over Pam because she had her hand up.
Oh, Pam?
No, Natalie, I was gonna say, uh, to move on to the next part, because I know we were French for time. So you did it. That's perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. So I mean, what can we do? Well, to start, the, on the crisis, like on this staffing crisis that Bernie and Sarah and I. And Pam are describing, so you know, trying to get across to people. Um, and I hope it, like, people get it. It's really on a totally different scale than we've seen. Um. The, what we're gonna do is, we don't want to hold tons and tons of them, because we want to do several very, very well. But um, in Quebec, the nurses did marches on bridges. They um, they went out and they, and they had their uh. Their scrubs on and so on and they um, they uh, covered the bridges in Montreal across the river. It was very visual. It really captured the attention and imagination of the media and the public and obviously. The, the sympathy of the public. We wanted to do something like that. Um, and so we have some events coming. One is in Toronto. Do you know Hospital Row? It's like, it's where the legisla- it's on University Avenue and. The university health network is on one side, Mount Sinai is on the other, Sick Kids is just down here. It's lined with the big, big hospitals. So we were gonna go to Toronto on um, on Monday. December the twelfth at noon. And like just line University Avenue with as many people as we could. With, we'll get the uh, doctors and nurses and health professionals to come and support staff to come out of. The hospitals along Hospital Row and then, and we'd like to like fill the median in between, have signs. And you know, have flowers and candles and support for our hospitals, for their leadership, for their staff. For doing so much for all of us and then just give it to the Ford government for not giving them what they need. In order to provide for all of us, like for just sitting on their hands and letting the crisis go. And uh, for privatizing their services. So that would be December twelfth at noon. And uh for privatizing their services. So that would be December twelfth at noon. We're gonna do one in Ottawa, December ninth at noon. Um Waterloo is gonna do one. So I thought rather, I don't know what you think, but what do you think? Would you, would folks come to Toronto? To do that? We need to have a lot of people, you know? Or do you wanna do something like on a bridge over the four oh one here? But we prefer to do that like later and do the like a big one in Toronto um sooner so that people can see visible resistance to this, you know, visible support for the hospitals and did, you know, demanding the Ford government actually do something. They need to know that that's what's happening.
Did you see what uh somebody said that December the twelfth is the week after the legislation rises?
It doesn't matter. That's not relevant. Sorry, I don't mean to, I'm just trying to brush up like we are going ahead with that date. It can't be changed at this point.
Okay, this I just, somebody just said it, that's all.
Sorry.
I don't know if Pam's got any ideas on this.
Like, are people supportive, really? Like, if we were to do it, do people know where your the the reactions button is? Down on the bottom there, it's got the round smiley face with the plus sign. Who would come or and would organize people to come? If we were to do it, can you put up your hands? If you click on the reactions?
Oops, where am I?
Well, this is good. So some people would come? Okay, now if we were to do something in Durham, like on one of the bridges over the four oh one. Maybe put those hands.
I I'm against doing any in o- over the bridges in Oshawa the way, because they're got construction, things going on down there.
Okay.
Um now Pam might have an idea what you'd like to do.
No, I think what Natalie said in regards to the actually, the octo- the October, um with it, December the twelfth um date. Um if we can organize uh the group uh to get to get one big thing down and you're in front of the uh those major hospitals, it'll it'll be very impactful. Um we just have to organize around to get people down there. So uh that is a great idea.
Okay, good. So maybe we can do that. We can organize that. And then, oh, Jennifer has her hand up. And then I'll show you the like stuff to stop privatization.
Um hi, thank you. And I I have so many thoughts and I won't share them, but if anybody wants to discuss them with me, I'm I'm glad to not be a conservative MPP. And for all of you who are wondering why you can't get anything back from their offices, I've heard that some of the Durham MPPs have furniture and haven't even staffed up. Like the it's it's insane. We've been doing this six months since the last election. They're not even getting emails. Um anyway, uh I would love to be supportive on the twelfth or or anything else. Um and just so you guys know, the legislature does rise on the eighth. So if part of your protest were to be at Queen's Park, um what like there won't be anybody sitting there, but I don't think that that matters. I think if the media and the broader community, like, don't let that hamper you. But uh something on, something on Hospital Row. Um Natalie, if if folks have enough time to get the message out and they know exactly what TTC stops to use and how to get into the city and come, you'd be able to have people come from all over if that was also communicated for how to get how to meet up with folks on ground level. But anyway, um and I have millions and millions of thoughts that if anyone on this call is not part of the kind of if this is new information for folks and they wanna discuss it with me or my office, I'm I'm onside and entirely grateful for everybody on this call and uh the Ontario Health Coalition work. Natalie, all of your reports and stuff, everyone should read it. It's just fantastic. So.
Thank you.
We were using it in the legislature the other day and the government was dancing around calling us uh fear mongers and all of that and makes it seem like we're making this stuff up. So we have a long way to go with them, but it is purposeful what they're doing. So.
Can I gonna share my screen? Is that okay Lance?
Yes.
Natalie, can I just say one thing to Jennifer? I just wanna thank you because um you're always so out there talking about, doesn't matter, even though you're from Oshawa, you represent us all because you're in that sea blue of orange with all of those, you know, colors that I won't say. Um so um I just wanna take this opportunity to thank you because you do advocate for all of us, regardless of who it is. Um and uh thank you and let it keep calling you folks fear mongering. It means you got their attention and you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
They have to have some answer, you know? What are they gonna say? Um okay, I'm gonna share my screen, Kay. Thank you Jen- Jennifer so much, friend and uh and amazing advocate in the ledge. Okay, so sharing my screen. This is our website. So if you're, if you just Google Ontario Health Coalition, it's the address is here, ontariohealthcoalition.ca. No punctuation, but if you just Google Ontario Health Coalition, it comes up. And this is what the website looks like. And what we're trying to do, we're gonna ask you to help is we're trying to get a thousand, sorry, a million Medicare defenders. So like, where is this going ultimately? We're, you know, hoping for like job action that will make it impossible for them to go forward with this. Um and and or a province-wide referendum. And if we were to say have a million people vote against privatizing the hospitals, there's just no government that would go ahead with it. So we would be able to stop them. Um and but we gotta build to that. I think we can absolutely do it, like without question, I think we can do it. But to get there, we need to, you know, reach out and reach out and reach out and try and reach the mass of people. And so this is one way. So we're asking people, will you sign up to be a Medicare defender? It's not like a membership thing. What we're trying to do is get people to commit to protecting public healthcare. And what that means is you could hand out leaflets. Um we have surveys for people who have gone to private clinics like cataract surgery clinics and been charged two thousand dollars for their cataract surgery or two hundred dollars for your eye measurement test, et cetera. So we're trying to collect the evidence on the private clinics that do exist in Ontario, how they violate the Medicare laws that prohibit extra billing patients and so on. Then we'll bring a writ of mandamus, which is a court action to force the government to uphold our laws that protect patients against extra billing, the Canada Health Act at the federal level, the Protection of the Future of Medicare Act at the provincial level. So we have the surveys and they're very simple. They just say, you know, have you been charged for a healthcare service? When was it? How much was it? Et cetera. They can be anonymous. Um or you can give us your contact info um so we can talk to you. And then also promoting and attending, if possible, those protests that we're talking about, the marches on bridges or in this case, um you know, Hospital Row. So all that info is here. If you click on the here button, the leaflet is there, you can print it. We'll have some at the Health Coalition in Durham, I'll have some at my house. I'm in Oshawa and I'll also print up the surveys as well, so people can have them. So it's all there. But the most important thing is, can you sign up to be a Medicare defender? We need to make that counter go up to a million. And then we'll have this sort of body of people to go and do a referendum, you know, uh and uh have people in Ontario vote on it. And you know, if we make the fight about privatization, we will win. There is no question. We'll win it. People do not wanna see our health system cut and privatized. So that's it.
Okay Lance.
Okay, thank you Natalie. Uh a- as you know, uh Sarah said something that's good a week in which we will discuss at our next uh Health Coalition meeting in the Durham, right? To plan something in the new year in the Durham region to protest. So and uh Natalie, I got a question to ask you about that thing. So we have retirees that don't have computers. If I go to go on there to sign them up and it says it must have an email, I don't mind using my email, but I don't want a hundred p- hundred emails for somebody to say, hey, Paul, how about this? You know what I'm saying? I can, so I I don't know what to do on that part, because I I've done that for the NDP thing and then I get all these emails from people.
So I think we have a checkbox. If you don't want, like, it says specifically, sorry, everyone. Um it, we can talk about this after and for you specifically Lance, but it it has a checkbox. If you want us to keep in touch with you and it won't be hundreds and hundreds of emails anyways, please don't like scare people away.
Yeah, no, no.
You know, we wanna be able to keep in touch with people um so that we're able to organize. But if you don't want to, you just say no.
Yeah, okay. Uh so I guess uh this is almost time to go now. I'm not sure if Natalie's got another thing.
We we have a town hall meeting in Windsor on this Zoom at noon. So we we have to vacate so they can get on. And anyway, thank you for everyone for your time and your commitment here. Yeah, it's been amazing. Thank you. What a great turnout. Thanks Saturday morning.
Thanks everybody for coming.
Thank you. And uh for those of you that are in Durham, I um would like uh for you folks to uh actually join your Durham Health Coalition. We're usually the third Wednesday, the last three uh Wednesday of the month, right Lance?
Yes, we won't meet in December.
On Zoom and it's on Zoom. Yeah, so in the new year, we'll send you out uh those uh information. Thank you all. And enjoy the rest of your weekend. Take care of each other.
Yeah, bye-bye.